What's up team, welcome to another study session video. Once again, we're gonna have the same recipe as last time, we're gonna do a little bit of a faster format. And we can discuss the things again after the study session, this way we respect each other's time. And you're gonna get the most value out of it. So in the future, if you watch this video right now on YouTube, be sure to be there so you can actually discuss and engage. And that way you're gonna get way more out of it and of course also be sure to submit new hands down below this video. For us to review in the next study session, which will mainly gonna, I think will be every Thursday 7pm, start of P in summer time. Anyway, let's get right into it. So we've got pocket tens here, it's a hand from Ace with face, this is pretty standard for three bet hijack first middle position, so everybody knows what's gonna happen. Middle position opens it up and he decides to three bet here with his pocket tens. He calls a standard, I'm not sure if I would call it standard, I think calling is completely fine too. One of the benefits though from three betting here is that we deny a lot of equity. From the players behind, which cannot flat that much anymore for his three bet. And we basically isolate middle position, it is one of the, you know, benefits of three betting here, but if you're gonna call, that would be completely fine too. So indeed, we see the players behind us folding and middle position does call, flop comes king six deuce. Middle position checks and Ace says both checking and betting are fine in my opinion, but wanted to keep the pot small. He has a lot of king x and there are many bad turns, so I checked. So what I personally find important here to note is. We wanna keep the pot small, we indeed wanna keep the pot small because our hands are always gonna be a bluff catcher. And we basically wanna try to get the showdown, right? We're not gonna get called by that many worse hands, he's still gonna have a lot of small pairs, gonna have suited broadways, gonna have suited ace six. That's basically what his range consists out of, yes, he's got a lot of king x, but like I said, that's the range that I would give him. And against that range. It's really gonna beneficial to bet here one third. Reason why is because we deny equity against our suited broadways, which cannot always continue, especially the ones without backdoor flush draw. We are still gonna get called by some worse pairs. So we gain some value as well, so it's a little bit of a universal bet and I think you can actually see bet here. Your whole range one third because we have such a big range of bets as we have aces, we've got kings, queens, jacks and tens. And then we've got loads of ace, king. While he has still a lot of the small pairs, which are gonna be vulnerable on a lot of turns, he's gonna have a lot of suited ace six, which missed the flop here, it's gonna have the suited broadways. So yeah, I would personally see bet here my whole range small. Also because people do not check raise often enough here, like I think he's supposed to check raise here on hand like sevens and eights. Which I don't think is gonna happen often enough. Reason why he's supposed to check raise those hands is basically for to deny equity against our ace queens and against our queen nines and against our jack nines. But yeah, I just do not see that happening often enough, especially here in a $1 tournament, I just will not see that happening often enough. So I would definitely be betting here my whole range on this flop. Ace does decide to check and then on the turn, like and also with the tens, when then overcard comes, we're gonna be in a lot of, in a lot of tough spots, so. I really prefer betting, on this king though, it's actually a pretty good card because it makes it less likely that villain has a king. He says turn villain checks twice, we obviously gonna bet pretty standard and get called, we need wanna bet. I think it's always gonna be important for yourself though to clarify why you wanna bet, like if we're gonna say like. Flop is standard, this is standard, this is standard, it may not actually be standard to you, you really wanna know. Why you do certain things, even though it seems standard, you wanna clarify to yourself and also when you're studying with others. Why you do certain things, because it may be standard with tens, what about knights? What about jacks? What about queens? Is that still standard? Like what do we do with those hands? Whereas if you clarify, okay, I wanna bet here with my tens because we deny equity, because we can still get couple worse hands. You're like, wait a second, the same applies with my pocket knights, wait a second, the same applies with my jacks. Queens is a little bit different because they're less overcards can come. But you already see that you will be able to categorize certain hands, so when you come into. A like, like a spot is somewhat the same, it will be way easier to adapt. Whereas if you say, oh, it's standard. You do not make those thought processes, so I think it's important to clarify what is standard for yourself and also. To other people when you are studying. And also by basically laying out. Why you are betting, you can also figure out what sizing to use, because you say it's standard, what is standard? Two thirds here? One third? Right? You don't really know, so. We decide betting here one third, but we don't really know why now, right? We don't really know why. Personally, I think once we check the flop, we actually wanna bet bigger. And just get, because his calling range is gonna be really inelastic. You know, the queen jack of clubs and all that kind of stuff is all gonna fold, he may call some ace highs, like ace queen suited, ace jack suited, may call it either way. And if, and if he folds it, that's awesome. But mainly, we wanna make it bigger here once we check the flop. Because we are gonna get called by nines and eights and sevens. Yes, sixes, but the pizzas, fives and fours and threes, they are gonna call anyway, ace six is gonna call anyway, all spades, all spades are all gonna call anyway. So we wanna charge those hands and basically go big here. And then we can, I would personally go big and then we can size it down on the river. But definitely wanna go bigger also because. If you wanna, if you're gonna go small here on the turn and big on the river. If he has those smaller pairs, there is another card that may be higher than his and it's gonna get tougher to get that value, so. I would definitely go bigger on the turn and also if you have those bluffs that we somehow did not see bet, like ace queen of spades and stuff. Queen nine of spades, I mean ace queen, queen nine, we probably oversbetting. Because we don't show the equity, ace jack of spades, we also wanna make it big. And then here. We see a lead which is kinda odd, we bet small the turn and leads hit the river. This river weird facing, a lead here after check check flop and him check calling the turn. After all, there's a three bet pot, so he can have jack jack queen and queen queen. I don't think he's gonna check twice, queens and jacks and all of a sudden lead the river, that doesn't make too much sense to me. A bunch of king x, guess that would make sense, you know, flushes, that would make a lot of sense. And I really seem doing it with smaller pairs or many ace highs, agreed, plus we don't have a spade. Not a board where you should bluff on a lot in my opinion, so I think we can find a fold here. So. His value is obviously gonna be king x and spades, I agree that he's probably not gonna have a lot of worse value. And then, what kind of bluffs does he have? Kinda none, like he would have to turn. Like random ace highs into bluff, like he's floating like ace queen of clubs or something on the turn here and decides to turn it into bluff. I just don't think it's gonna happen here often enough, so. Yeah, S play, I would like to see a fold here, but once again, I already emphasized it in the pre-study session. When you've already noted a mistake either on the turn or on the flop already or pre-flop already. You already can kinda stop the hand right there because you will not end up in the spot anymore. And I do calling it as a random ace nine. Yeah, that's something. I mean, guys, if he starts doing it with ace nine, then, I mean, once again, you're never gonna end up in there anymore. But yeah, then make a note and adjust next time. Okay, another hand here from Ace with face. $1.45 man once again, so considering three bet, three jamming stakes behind, I think I don't mind just folding, preserving some fold equity for the next two levels. Not getting into any weird marginal spots, but the open should be just fine as well. So we're playing 30 bigs there, we've got a short stack in the big blind, 10 big blinds, we've got a short stack on the button. Which are the most, two most important positions, button and big blind. When he is assured, it also means that he does not really have the option to call anymore, it's gonna, it should be for him basically shuffle fold. So yeah, here with the king jack. I would still like to open this. Also because people do not re-jam enough, especially in the lowest stakes, people don't three bet enough, especially with 25 big blinds, 30 big blinds. So yeah, definitely would like to see an open. Do see a call here from the high jack and the small blind calls as well for 25 big blind stake and the big blind calls as well, getting a really good price. See check, see check. And now the question is, what do we do? Flop, I bet small, which I think should be fine. Why? You have to, it's really important to know the why. Why is betting small fine? Because right now, Ace, you already continue to, to the next thing, super weird click back, he shouldn't have any, but why is it fine? You see? Kinda the same thing as in the first hand, not clarifying why you do certain things. Because I think a small sizing is actually the worst option of all. I see two options here, either betting really big. And checking, the reason why is we are playing him multi-way, what happens multi-way is. We have to have a way stronger range to bet because there are more people who can have a piece of the board, right? So when we see bet, it's automatically gonna be stronger and people that are gonna continue, those ranges are also automatically becoming stronger. Now from a GTO perspective, guys. PO himself wanna use mainly like some middling sizings. I'm not gonna buck you with that, I personally like to see either a big bet here or checking. Reason why is. It's a really polarized, when we bet, it is really strong and also our bluffs are also very often really, really strong. Like our bluffs here, like think about your bluffs, what are our bluffs gonna be, I mean, I guess it has to be hands like nine eight suited and ten nine suited. We block jack nine, jack eight and we have some gutters and then I guess some king queen suited, where we block king jack and queen jack. Those are probably gonna be our bluffs, maybe, I mean, I guess, hence like ace nine student stuff is gonna be optional as well, where you block ace jack and jack nine, you've got some backdoors. But we, we don't wanna bluff multi-way too much, right? Because of the reason I gave earlier, so I personally here with the king jack. I'm probably on a somewhat dry, I mean somewhat dynamic but also dry, you know, if it was jack nine seven, I'm definitely checking. Because people have more pieces of the board. King jack is probably the bottom of my betting range, ace jack I'm certainly betting, king jack I'm probably betting, queen jack always checking, jack nine always checking, jack ten always checking, jack eight suited always checking. But when I wanna bet here, I would definitely bet big here. And also, I would just make it a sizing where we just leave a pot sized bet on the turn, like if you bet here like 400. And someone calls, it's gonna be 1300 in a pot and we're gonna have 1300 left, so I would personally bet big here and leave a pot sized bet here on the turn. So right now here also with, by betting so small, we also do not, like we do not charge the jack x. We even allow five x and seven x to, to get a really good price. So yeah, we definitely wanna bet big, also with our bluffs, right? Because we don't wanna give five x and seven x a good price with our bluffs, we wanna put pressure on it, we wanna put pressure on this nine eight and nine six and six four. Whereas now he's getting a really easy call. So yeah, we miss value here and. Now we get clicked back, I mean honestly, when we bet so, like once again, we're never gonna end up in a spot again. But I would just run it, I'm on fire running it, he's gonna have a lot of worse jack x, when he bets the smaller on the turn, it's also gonna be really weak. Check, check, indeed worse jack x. I hope that makes sense. Alrighty, we've got a cast game hand here, a hand played by Serna in Discord, MSPM on. This poker site. We opened it up here with ace king suited. Says, pre-flop, I sometimes call and sometimes fold bet and go broke with this hand. Okie doh, so we get three bet. So. Let me explain this, we are playing really, really deep, when we are really, really deep. It is actually fine to not have a four bet range at all, some people actually choose to not have a four bet range at all versus. The button here from early in middle position, because when, when we start splitting our range, we get into a. We can get into some tough spots post-flop. Like if you're gonna have a four bet here and we get five bet, we are, you know, also in a little bit of a dicey spot. So some people just argue to just completely call our complete range, aces, kings, just call everything, keep his range wide, keep any of his bluffs that he have in there. Which seems fine, it's really personal preference, I'm personally using a mix, but unless I'm really deep. Like right now, I don't, I don't mind calling everything, I think that's completely fine. Or like four betting and never, yeah, just four betting. And calling the five bet and not jamming. So yeah, with the ace king here, we open it up, we get three ready by JK spell. We go for the four bet. And big blind calls. He said, in general, I tried to not go broke with ace king based on our experience, most of the times when players lead. Oh, based on our experience, oh, he's talking about the flop. Very often we go broke with ace king, especially in the lowest stakes, you're just gonna run into aces and kings. Sometimes queens. When players lead on the flop, if they're getting four bets, they're out of position, they're weak. I wouldn't necessarily make that. That generalization. I'm not sure what kind of sample he has. Or if he did a database analysis, I would be curious to, to, to look into that, to hear about that. But I think we're gonna see a lot of nines, tens and jacks here, they just wanna protect their hand to see they, you know, that, that there's not an overcard and they're afraid if they check. We are gonna check and then an overcard is gonna come. So me personally, I, I think it's more likely that this guy is gonna have hands like nines, tens and jacks than anything else. But he decides to jam. He says, hands, we decided to shove, calling is an option because then stack the pot ratio would be off the pot. I think he doesn't play four, four, five, five, six, six in his way and he doesn't have any eight x in his range, so I think. If I want to assign him a range, I would put him on some trolls and some random hands, which are trolls. And hands like jack, jack plus, what do you think about it? I think he has nines, tens and jacks, in honesty. And I guess he could have, maybe he's playing his value like his queens and kings and stuff as well that way, if he decides to not, like if he decided to trap pre-flop. He's indeed never gonna have those smaller pairs because he's just not gonna three bet them, he would just call. And I don't think people love three betting, they're. They're ten eyes suited and stuff often enough, I guess as three bet bluffs, I'm not 100% sure about cast game ranges, but I guess he's supposed to bluff like eight, seven suit and stuff. As middle position. Maybe the hands like king ten suit and stuff as well. Hands with quite some equity, like you don't wanna use completely random stuff like ace five offsuit or anything like that. So we jam and we get called by. Queen three suited. I also always three with my queen three suited and call the four bet, that seems fair. In all honesty, guys, once again here, you just, this is just a completely random example, like this hand is almost never gonna happen again. Maybe against this guy, just make a note that he did his queen three suited. And just freaking destroy him next time, just three bet, just four bet next time even bigger. You know? And other than that, don't look down on those hands, don't even, don't even review them. If he has hands like queen three, Senna, then yes, I would just call the flop and just call any turn. Because if it's queen three, then I guess he's gonna have queen four and queen five as well, I don't know. This is a hand from Ghibel. And he says, I'm not sure if this is too nitty on the river to call or if I should lead or check raise. I have no idea what this limp range under the gun is and if they are overpass and if he will check them on the flop, I don't think I get value from a lot of worse hands. I feel like I risk my stack between a fold, a split or against an overpair or even a four, six. So we see a limp from under the gun, small blind completes and check, check, these suited, that seems fine. Three sixes, goes check, 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 check on the turn, check again, I like it, not too many worse hands that are gonna call. Got somewhat of a lock on this hand, I don't mind it, I think seems fine, I don't mind betting, I mean, if this guy had smaller pairs, he's probably betting a flop anyway, right? So if you're gonna bet here, this guy can save some six six, he could have some six six and just call, check the flop as well, right? Because he has complete lock on hand, I don't mind the check, like it's tough to get called by too many worse hands, I mean clubs may call. As well as some ace highs, but I figure check is completely fine, do see an overbet here, which is weird. We are of course gonna call if the check though. And the river is a ten, check again and he bets pot. I mean, we are still gonna have, from a, from a GTO perspective here, we're still gonna have deuces, threes, fours, fives. Right? We're still gonna have sevens, eights and nines, so we are gonna have some middling pairs that we can fold, we are gonna have club picks that we can fold. And we've got some six six and then we've got jack x, so that's how our range looks like, right? So from a GTO perspective. This is always. A call. This is always a call. Now the question is, will villain have enough bluffs here? He can have clubs. And complete random stuff. Can have some chops with a jack as well. So. I mean, clubs and a, and a jack, I think even that, then we are already supposed to call. He has all those club combinations, all those suited club combinations, nine eight of clubs, ten, I mean, ten. Tens probably not betting it, nine eight, eight seven, seven five. Eight five, ace deuce, ace three, ace four. Ace seven of clubs, ace eight of clubs, ace nine of clubs, people are also limping the king five and clubs, all that kind of stuff, king nine, king eight. So it's probably it's gonna be a call here, also because it's six x, it's like seven six suited. Maybe eight six suited, king six suited, I guess, ace six suited, like it's not that many combinations, right? We talk about three, like one combination each, so like four combinations or something. Yeah, do we consider a jam if he doesn't overbet? I don't see any reason to jam. Because we're not gonna get called with worse hands. We're only gonna get called by chops, both by quads and that's it. So if you're gonna jam, we literally just fairy turning ourselves. But yeah, I would be calling it. Yep, and he's got the six, I assume, he does not, the ten seven. I mean, especially, like right now, especially if he does it with a ten even. Even greater of a call, right? Because. He's got, he will be betting more hands than we beat, I actually expected him to check his ten, ten club picks hands. Or bet smaller to get value out of those smaller pairs that we have. Right now, I feel like by betting so big, I think he's fairy turning himself. We've got a hand here from Modakers who opens it up here with ace jack offsuit, he says, can anyone advance, tell me, am I advanced here? I don't know. Not sure if I apply, but I'm gonna try. Dude, I like this fold, I raised big on the flop to kick out all the draws, but when he calls, I put him on draws. Wait. We'll see how this plays out first. So we see an open here, uh, see an open from us, see a call from the button, big blind comes along as well. And we decide to bet three, four of here on this flop and we get called. We bet big here to kick out all his draws, but when we get called, we put him on a lot of draws. That sounds contradicting. Because if we are arguing, we bet big to kick out his draws, but he still calls his draws, then. Doesn't seem optimal, I think we're betting really big, I guess, we're basically gonna fairy turn ourselves, we're not gonna get the call, like. Probably an ace not folding right away, but like king x six x is very often gonna make the fold here. I would rather go for one third and keep the ranges wide, also if aces, the kings and sixes. Probably wanna go smaller here as well, like probably 40% or something I would bet here. Do get called by the button. And we turn a jack, yes, spades get there, queen ten gets well, get there, but we do turn two pair here. Beating now ace six. King jack, if that's somehow called, still beat that. Other than that, it doesn't really change too much, other than spades getting there and queen ten getting there, so. Even though it looks like a good turn, like it doesn't really change that much. I feel like, like once we are gonna jam here, I don't think a worse ace is ever gonna call. And that's kinda already the problem of betting so big on the flop, like personally ace jack, it's probably a fine bet because people not gonna have ace king. Or aces and kings, right? So we have a bigger range of ventures, but like ace nine and below, I'm definitely checking the flop. Let's see what Zombie says here, if you bet big on the flop, the range from your opponents will be stronger as well, which is not great, we want to keep the range wide. If we turn the jack of spades, I would just jam it, we still get called by some ace ten with a spade, ace queen with a spade. Even hands like ace six suited, king jack suited might stick it in. I see people jamming ace queen five of spades as well if you check, so if I check turn, have to call it off, but I like jamming turn more. Yeah, I, I think, I think if we wanna get called by worse ace six, then I think we're never gonna get it on the river and there's a chance we get it on the turn. Pro maybe he has king queen with the queen of spades and decides to call as well, it's a bounty three thirty, he covers us. Bluff, people are fancy, but once again, we, we're never gonna end up in the spot anymore, right? Now we check, he jams, and yeah, I think we're gonna have to call here because he can have some worse ace six. That he's overplaying, plus if he bets so big, it's probably not gonna call all this suited queen ten, right? He's not gonna call queen ten of diamonds. Probably queen ten of hearts is probably even gonna fold versus a 75% bet on the flop, so. He's gonna have a royal, which is not always gonna shove here, because it's uber nuts. And he's kinda spades, but also. There's also not that many combinations even. And he could have some worse two pairs of ace six, could have sixes. King jack. So yeah, I would be calling her. We've got ace queen offsuit here. And a fold surround here to the high jack. Fold, fold. Small blind fold and the big blind calls, now the flop comes. King nine deuce double suited, what's important to note here, guys, is the stack sizes, this guy is really short, he only has seven big blinds behind, a little bit more than one SPR here. If we're gonna bet here on ace queen, guys, if we're gonna bet here small. We are gonna have to call a jam, because he's gonna jam all his deuce six, all his nine x. And we do just have enough equity against that, so I don't mind just betting and calling it off. But I think checking is gonna be fine here too, especially if he has like, let's say he would have had 5k behind or something. Then it gets, you know, pretty ugly to, to bet call, then we definitely wanna be checking here, so I would personally also here with seven big blinds, I would probably also just check here. Like unless he had like 2k or 2.5k. Then I would probably always be betting and calling it off, but I think even now, I would probably just check. And realize our equity. Right now, we do better with a small, do like the sizing though, we get called by Tavi. Turn is insanely good for us though, and I would personally always be jamming here, as well as with our ace jack and ace ten and all that kind of stuff. So yeah, I would definitely be jamming here and. Check though. Check here the river and then I would probably just bet small indeed. To get called by nine and a deuce because almost all our bluffs are continuing on the turn, I feel like. First is we'll go all in pre-flop by the way. 16 big blinds, it would be a reasonable jam. But very often you will see that the raise calling is very often gonna show a higher ife though, like they cannot really just call anymore, right? So it's basically they're just gonna play shuffle fold anyway, same for this guy, even 15 big blinds. And by just raising instead of shoving, they know they can still have some fold equity, thus they're getting it in range, it's gonna be a little bit wider. Than when we shove and they call, so we're actually gonna induce some more. More jams and we're gonna have. Higher ife by raising, I think. So get called. And bet is small on the river, which I think is fine, but I think jamming the turn is gonna be better, still gonna get called by a queen ten, a queen nine. Hearts, where we, I mean, which we are not doing too great against, but we still have an out. I think a nine is still gonna call, I think a, a king, we still have a lot of equity, I, I don't think checking the turn is bad though. I would probably just play it straightforward. Also with a lot of bluffs, getting deuce six and nine next to fold, good pressure on it. Now, like S play, they do like the small sizing here, do get called with ten nine, like it's gonna have a lot of pairs with a heart draw in there as well, you know? Those are gonna have queen jack, queen ten, probably, you know, queen eight and stuff with a heart and stuff, he's supposed to call that on the flop as well, so. I would personally jam the turn, but. I, I do really like his small bet here on the river though, S play, curious to hear what you guys think about the hand, will you guys be jamming the turn? So we see here an open for, from the cutoff and we've got ten nine suited here on the button. It's deep here in a $27, seems to be a bounty. We decide to call if the ten nine suited, 20 big blinds, seems fine, don't really like the three bet fold, I mean, I think three bet folding seems fine too though. But I think I prefer calling here, when we cover those guys and we are fine just, you know, playing post, having a chance to win the bounties and we don't really wanna three bet and call it off. So I think I prefer calling over three betting for sure. Now we flop a backdoor, uh, flop a gutter to an eight and a backdoor flush draw goes check, check. This guy is actually supposed to check loads here, because we sma, you know, we're gonna have way more suited connectors and stuff than he does. Big blind has, you know, all those two pairs, we've got all the sets. He has to be really carefully on such a connected board. That being said though. I don't mind to bet small here. We can continue with clubs, on a nine, on a 10. On the jack probably. on a jack probably. So yeah, I don't mind to bet small here with the backdoor flush draw. Do get raised here by the big blind really small though, so I would definitely be calling here. And the turn comes 7 of spades. Now he checks, so he check raises the flop, which this guy definitely gonna be 4, 6 or 7s. I think, I mean 8, 5 as well, 5, 3 suited. I think those 8, 5 and 5, 3 are a little bit more vulnerable though, so they are almost always gonna continue here on the turn. He could have some hearts, which may also continue here on the turn very often. When he checks, he could have some 5x that he decides to give up as well as, um, value, which is gonna be fours and sixes. 7, 6 to 7, 4, where he just has a complete lock on hand and decides to, to check here. So if you look at those ranges when he checks, he has boats and then maybe some 5x and flush draws that he decides to slow down on, but all in all, I mean in all, let's see if you, if you, if you look at it, like we're still gonna have failure, right? We're still gonna have 7x, which we would, we definitely wanna be betting here on the turn. As a bluffs, I would rather use a hand here like 10, 9 than hearts because if you get checked jammed on, we do not fold too much equity. So I would probably put this 10, 9 in my betting range for that reason. And, um, deny equity against better flush draws. So I would bet like 400k and then fold through a jam. Does go check, check though. I don't think it's terrible though. I think it's completely fine. Probably putting it into my betting range. And we river an 8. So we river the straight and now we see a 500k bet. So the range that we gave him is gonna be boats and draws that he decided to give up on the turn, but may have gotten there on the river. So he can have some 5x strids. And that if we are, like the discussion, discussion is we always calling, right? We're either calling or raising. We never folding. So do we have a profitable jam here? He's gonna have boats. He's gonna have 5x. That's everything that's gonna call. I think a 7 is always folding if you jam here. I think a 5, I mean even a 5 is in a really tough spot though. A 5 is really in a tough spot. Like we have to turn like 9, 8 into bluff. Not hearts, because if hearts, we block his snap folds. We have to turn like 9, 8 into bluff or 10, 8. Which I think people are not gonna do often enough. So I personally think that if we are gonna jam here, a hand like 10, 9, if we're gonna jam here, I think he's gonna fold a 5 more often than not. I think if it's a fun player, I would jam here because I think fun players not gonna be able to fold a straight. But I think a general, he is supposed to fold a straight here. We are still gonna have boats, right? We're gonna, still gonna have fours and sixes and sevens if you decided to just call that on the flop. So yeah, I feel like if you're gonna jam, we're somewhat fairy turning ourselves. Like you can put this into Equilab guys. You could put it in Equilab, give him a, a, a range that he's gonna call and then you can see how many 5x he is supposed to call for us to have a profitable jam. So actually if he has 9, 5, yeah, 9, 5 is definitely calling though. So I would, I mean, the thing is there's also ife though in getting his bounty. So I think with the, with the being, with there being a chance that he does not fold a 5 and he's probably continuing with his 8, 7. Yeah, I feel like it's very often sets as well. Like we have to, like thi- this year we just gotta Equilab and see how many 5x he is supposed to call. For us to have a profitable jam. But there's definitely a lot of added failure here because of the bounty. I don't know how much the starting second stuff was in the tournament, which is really important to, to know. The thing is if we jam here and we lose, we still have 800k. We still cover 1, 2, 3 people. So I think because of the bounty, I would go for the jam because, and, and, and hope that he's not able to fold a 5. But if you think he's always folding a 5 or very often, I think we should definitely just call. I think it's gonna be really opponent dependent. Fun player, jamming. Good player, probably just calling. We end up jamming and he calls and he has sixes. Jacks. So yeah, that's probably what I would base it on. I think in a non-PKO, I'm always just calling. And I think in a PKO, uh, I think your jam is gonna be fine when he has such a big bounty like comparing it to other bounties seems pretty big. Aside from what Zombie said, 9, 5 suited, he will fold 5x with population more often. Yeah, so I think, yeah, I fix it too, to be honest. So I think unless it, only, I would only jam when it's a fun player. That's probably what I would do. So yeah, all in all here, I would probably just call here the river because I think a 5 is very often continuing here in the turn after check raising the flop. Also targeting our hearts and stuff in our range because he doesn't have any shoulder equity with those, whereas if he has hearts, he basically blocks uh, a fairly big portion of our, um, snap folding range here on the turn. So I think 5x is very often continuing here on the turn already. Uh, which leaves him with less 5x here on the river. And then also to, to add on that, a 5 may not always gonna call here on the river because it's also fairly tough for us to have bluffs because with our hearts, we also block his snap folds. So we would have to turn hands like 10, 8 suited, 9, 8 suited into a bluff. And are we doing that often enough? I think it's gonna be really tough to find a call here with a 5 where you still have some boats and stuff, so. I think I would at the end, even though it's a PKO, I would probably end up just calling here on the river instead of jamming. Let's check this hand with 10, 6 suited here. See an open from forgot to flush. Fold, fold. Small blind folds. We of course defend our big blind for 10, 6 suited. We flop a flush draw. See a bet here. First important thing to note here is that we have, uh, way more 5x than forgot to flush. We've got way more 5x. So we are supposed to check raise here like, I don't know, 20%, 25% of the time here. Something like that. Uh, even smaller pairs may wanna check raise here because he's gonna see that on his board 100% and we can deny some equity against 6 outers and stuff. That being said though, 10, 6 suited, I would personally put into my calling range. Reason why is because if you're gonna che, if you're gonna check raise here and he runs it, I mean, he could probably comfortably fold, but, we we also wanna have some flusses in our calling range, some flush draws, right? And I feel like I would be more comfortable to put my not flush draws in my check raise range and play a bigger part with those because if we hit our flush, we are fine going broke with, with 10, 6. They can still have better flusses. So I would personally put this into my calling range. Uh, but I don't think check raising is, is bad though. Also because people do not defend enough of this check raise. Which also comes because people don't check raise enough. Yeah, he like, he's supposed to continue here with all his ace, king, all his ace queens. And I think if people have ace, queen of diamonds and something, more often than not, they just click fold. Raise higher ace 6 and lower spade and call the middle one seems good to me. Yeah, I think it's true. And, and like maybe you wanna do it with like 8, 6 suited, where you then can continue on straight draws as well. You know, with 10, 6, you, we just have basically naked flush draw. You know what I mean? So yeah, I agree with that. We do go for the check raise and we do get called. My horse says queen 10 suited, 8, 7 suited would be in our check raise range. I mean, those are more of those middling hands, right? So those middling hands I would put in my calling range. Our, our check raise is pretty polarized. So I think, I think like the, the better ace 6 and then maybe some su, um, so suited connects like 7, 6 of spades and stuff. I would probably be more comfortable check raising because we also get all this 10 highs to fold and stuff like that. And, um, we can continue on like an 8, on a 4, on a 3. Where we, you know, have a little bit more equity. Now with the 10, 6, we still just have this naked flush draw. So now we have the situation. Do we wanna continue or not? I think when we check raise here, we probably do wanna continue here because he's still having ace, king and ace, queen especially with this, with the clubs, um, for sure. Plus we put a lot of pressure on the sixes and sevens, nines and tens and his deuces of threes and fours, which is also supposed to call versus our check raise. So yeah, I would definitely continue here. Checks. Not a fan of that. Because we have way more 5x than forgot to flush, right? Like we have 8, you know, we have ace, 5 offsuit. He may not always. We've got king 5 su, ace 5 suited, king 5 suited, queen 5 suited, jack 5 suited, 10 5 suited, 9 5 suited, 8 5 suited, 7 5 suited. He doesn't have those, right? And we do. So we've got way more 5x combinations than he does. So I think we definitely wanna continue here on the turn. Against the sizing, I mean, it's, it's, we get 4 to 1. So that means we need 20% equity here against a betting range. And I think if he floated a hand like ace, king and ace, queen, also with backdoor flush draw, I just think people are not gonna bet that often enough here on the turn. He can still have better flush draws, for example, if he decides to bet that and not take a free river. Hands like 10s and nines and eights, uh, I mean sevens and sixes would make sense here as well, betting small and to, to be able to check back the river. Do we have 20% here against that range and we can add like, I don't know, 2% or something? With implied odds. And there's a chance we have some refers, right? That he has a better flush draw. I probably folding, but like once again, I'm probably always continuing here on the turn and probably never check raising flop with this combo. At least probably not. Never say never. We do check call though and then the river comes 9. I mean, now as played, when we bet the flop, uh, check raise the flop, check the turn, it doesn't make any sense to me to all of a sudden, uh, lead here the river. Just doesn't make any sense at all, right? So I would always be checking here. This would have actually been a great river to jam on if he decided to continue on the turn. Blocking queen 10, blocking 7, 6. If he has that. Probably doesn't. But he does have queen 10. So yeah, would, would be a pretty good run out to, to, to jam on, I think. Although on the other hand, 8s and nines as middling pairs that we were trying to target on the turns of do improve and probably people are not gonna be able to fold hands like aces and kings and queens or even jackx often enough. People are fucking calling station when flush draws and stuff miss. So we would have to be careful. And that's kinda the issue of this hand, where we just have that naked flush draw. That's why I'm not a fan of check raising this flo, this hand on this board. So we check the river and it goes check, check. And he had 9, 7. So we basically had him drawing pretty thin, but he, uh, bings a 9 on the river. I don't think he's always betting ace, queen and ace, king. Uh, oh, you mean ace, king offsuit and ace, queen offsuit with a spade? If he's continuing with that on the flop, he's supposed to, yes. He's supposed to continue all his ace, king, ace, queen. But we gotta ask ourselves, is he gonna bet those hands here 1/3 on the turn? And I say, I don't think so. I don't think that's gonna happen often enough. So yeah, once again, this is a spot where I personally would never really end up within. I would just call here the flop. But yeah, S-played. When you check raise, I would continue here on the turn because we have way more 5x. Wanna pressure those smaller pairs and then if we do check, I would probably just give up because I don't think we have the 20% that's required to call here. But once we call, I would definitely just check and give up here. And also like, let's say we do check call here, right? That's important to note as well. If you do check call, if a spade hits the river, we're probably not gonna get more value. Right? What are we gonna do? A spade hits the river, we gonna lead all of a sudden? But we are not really check raising too many off-suited spade combinations, right? I mean, are we gonna check raise ace, deuce with ace of spades? I don't think we do often enough, you know, so. Wouldn't make sense to me, you know, so implied odds, also not really because we're not all of a sudden gonna lead on spade, on spade rivers. Plus there are some refers implied if he has like king, queen of spades, you know, better flush draws, so. Not a fan of how this hand was played. Curious to hear what you guys think though in the comment section down below. And of course, also be sure to comment your new hands for next week down below in the YouTube comment section. And I will be reviewing those. Next week on Thursday is 7pm Central European Summer Time, same time as today, so it will be, Thursday, the 25th of July, Central European Summer Time, which is the time in Amsterdam and Paris and Madrid. 6pm GMT, British Summer Time and 1pm Eastern Time. Thank you guys so much for watching. Be sure to like and subscribe if you liked it. Curious to hear what you guys think of this format and looking forward to see you guys next week.